Having a public hearing to propose sewer rate increase. John, would you explain that so people understand and we'll have council comments?
Okay, so the proposed sewer rate increase is, as we've discussed and went through the sewer rate ordinances before, consists of a five percent increase, and that will be across the board for residents within the city, outside the city. That increase is based upon what we consider our average users, which is tied to water rates as well, or water usage as well. To say that it's a straight five percent increase is not exactly true. If you're a low water user, the increase may be higher because there was an increase to the availability fee as well, but it is a five percent and will be evaluated next year as it will be implemented next year.
Now, John, didn't we do a cost, have a cost evaluation done?
We did. We had a sewer rate analysis that was completed about March, April of this year, and was reviewed by the committee with Toth Engineering, and they have, they have established sewer rates to be approximately thirty percent low, is what they estimated them to be. The increase of five percent is based upon that report. I know five percent is a far cry from thirty percent, but five percent is a start. It's a step in the right direction, and I believe that as the, you know, as the year progresses next year and we continue to monitor this, we'll see thirty percent may or may not be warranted. We just don't know yet.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that in case you weren't going to, that you tell anybody that the increase is very small compared to how far behind we are.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any citizens' comments regarding this rate increase? Mr. Pritchard, come up, please.
Good evening, council. Keith Pritchard, 300 Highland Woods Drive, Waynesville, Missouri. I see on the agenda is a proposed ordinance to authorize a conditional use for cell tower in residential area. I continue to rise in opposition to the cell tower being placed in, or any tower being placed in a residential area. This question's been on the table since August.
Keith, we're self-open session on this.
I'm sorry.
Rate, rate increase. I apologize. I should have.
You said citizens' comments.
I should have caught that.
Citizens' comments.
Stay close. We'll get there real quick. Is there any citizen's comment regarding the rate increase for the sewer? One thing I, and I did point this out to John, and I would like more clarification for the whole council. If you look at that section one, it says following monthly rate to be effective at December twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two building cycle shall be charged to accounts located outside the city limits for the use and service of wastewater for the system of the city. It doesn't say anything about the city, so that's where I'd like you to clarify this. Maybe our attorney can.
So what we, so what we have, doctors, we have revised that to say the following monthly rates on section one, the following monthly rates to be effective December twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two building cycle shall be charged for the use and service of wastewater, also known as sanitary sewage system of the city for customers who have metered water, and we've changed that to the twenty a month, which is availability fee, minimum charge. It increased one dollar from nineteen to twenty, and usage at three fifty, which is five percent greater than.
Very good.
Well, it still says we have metered water. It doesn't say anything about regular city customers.
All of the city customers are on meters, right? All metered customers. Yeah, so that would be county, too.
We have two wells.
So everybody that's on our meters.
Okay, well, I'll accept that change. And so that would be the change in that particular ordinance. No other comments?
I've got a question I asked last month about, are we losing money right now to current rates that we're charging?
Yes.
We're down thirty percent, right?
Thirty percent, yes.
So we're losing thirty percent.
That's why I wanted to make sure people knew we're actually losing money every month.
That's correct.
And even if this, we'll still lose twenty-five percent, right? It's only a five percent increase?
So what they say is, now, now keep in mind, it's a little difficult to track straight up dollar for dollar in the accounting method of evaluating a rate, because a portion of that rate goes to, you know, repair, replacement. And so as you go through and you're trying to account for that, you have to watch your, you have to watch your account balances very closely to make sure that that percentage is going towards that. So to say that, you know, say there's six percent of this fee goes for repair and replacement, okay, or a maintenance fund, to track that accounting is very difficult to do over time because you have, as the budget goes on through the year, you know, you're kind of watching this, it is all in wastewater funds, so you're watching this fund go up and down as fees are paid, but also as repairs are made and replacements are made. So you have individual components of that system that are actually being repaired or replaced on a daily basis, so you have to, you kind of have to watch that. It's hard to say.
So with this rate increase, does the city still have the potential to lose money?
Yes.
Question, is this based on water usage, or do we have meters on our sewer?
Um, both. It's based on water usage. We have a meter on a sewer connection of one of our customers, which is the sewer district. We meter their sewer production, but for just the residents of the city, it would be based on their water usage, which is metered through the water meter.
Does it take into account of water that we lose through leaks and things of that nature?
No, sir. That doesn't make it through the meter. Only the water that flows through the meter is what they're charged for. And then if you think, you know, we have other ordinances that allow for the forgiveness of maybe a water and sewer bill, and definitely a sewer bill on a water leak. So if you have a water leak on your house side, and you're gone, and you have this exorbitant amount of water usage during that time, and we've tracked your account from months past and years past, and we know that you didn't use that much water, you actually had a leak, you can prove it to us, you don't get charged for the sewer portion of that bill. We will take your, your average use, and that's what we'll charge you for the sewer. So that's how we track that. So there is a forgiveness there.
Any other questions?
So if a guy has a garden in his backyard and he waters it, he still gets a charge for sewer because the water's going to a meter?
Unless he has an irrigation meter.
Absolutely, because it's, as far as the city's concerned, that amount of water is so negligible that it would be a waste of money to double meter out.
But there's also the potential to have an irrigation meter bill such that.
That's why I'm asking the question. There's no way to find that.
Well, and that's a way to educate the people watching online and other places, and, and we do have several irrigation meters where people, you know, do water their gardens and other things, and they don't get charged a sewer bill on those, on that water usage.
We also have, like, people who fill up their pools yearly, same thing. They'll call us, we go out, we read their water meter, call us when it's full, we go out, read again, and then we adjust their sewer according to how many gallons they use to fill the pool.
Any other questions regarding this? No other questions? This public hearing is closed. We have a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept a consent agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Liberty and Mr. Davis, any discussion? Any changes? Vote, please.
Roll call? Or not roll call, get hands, show hands, please. Thank you.
Now, citizens' comments.
Mr. Pritchard.
Could I just repeat the last one?
You should have recorded it.
Hello, Keith Pritchard, 300 Highland Woods Drive, Waynesville, Missouri. I came to speak to the proposed ordinance to authorize cell tower in a residential subdivision, R one, area that I oppose. I opposed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, which where it was presented originally in August of twenty-one. It was denied, it's been denied every discussion that we've had so far. I understand there's been lots of conversation. I want to make it clear again that I do not oppose a cell tower, I do not oppose any improved cell services, and understand that there may be some legal acts from, that allows telecommunications and superpowers to do whatever they want, where they want, when they want, whatever, or they'll sue the city. And I would just say that I believe any reasonable person could understand why a cell tower in a residential subdivision is not the most optimal place, and there are many places within the city with better elevation areas and would do equal amount of good to the community. A cell tower should be placed, but an R one subdivision is not a, not where it should be located. And I would ask that you represent and respond to your citizens that have been to the planning zoning and the forum meetings before, represent them, and oppose this respectfully. Chief Pritchard, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens' comments? Special guest presentation? We have none tonight. Board commissions lay as on report. Park board, no meeting was held. Planning and zoning, Councilman Davis.
Planning and zoning meeting was held on June fourteenth at five thirty P M. A quarter was, a quorum was present. We approved the minutes from the May tenth meeting. We opened up a public hearing on conditional use permit for a property located sixteen oh five Route sixty-six. The public hearing was to allow a chicken coop or chickens in a residential R one zone area. It was a fairly lengthy discussion. The property owner spoke about the chickens. The, some of the neighbors spoke about the chicken, to include some of the renters there next to it. The renters and the property owners did not like the chickens there. They go over the fences multiple times, defecate on the porches. There's actually forty-seven chickens there, so it's quite a few chickens in a residential After all comments were made, we closed the public hearing. We voted not to send the conditional use permit to the city council because there's a municipal code restricting livestock and farm animals within the city limits, and R one zoned areas within the city limits. After that, we closed the public hearing. Other business, Mr. Doyle discussed the Board of Adjustments meeting that was held on the eighth of June. The meeting was held for variance, application for request for a setback, I believe in the Cox subdivision, right? Setbacks are required by the city for plats and French. This one, the setback, I want to say two to three foot of the porch wasn't within the setback limit, but that was just informational only. With no further business, the meeting was adjourned at six twenty. The next meeting will be the twelfth of July at five thirty P M.
All right, we do have a proposed ordinance, House Bill twenty-two dash seventeen. Reading, please.
An ordinance granting approval for a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower to be located at one oh seven Veeran Lane, Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective An ordinance granting approval for a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower to be located at one oh seven Veeran Lane, Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Connolly makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Discussion.
Second.
Did Verizon do any research on a different spot for the town?
No.
Yes.
Did they?
I guess they did.
I think Verizon's attorney is actually on Zoom. Curtis, could you respond to that?
Yeah, this is Curtis Halling, attorney representing Verizon and Mars. They did an extensive evaluation of the locations where they need a facility that will work for them. You have to understand that these facilities need to be in very specific geographic areas to make the overall network operate properly. This can't be moved wherever, that might need some high ground, or wherever some of the elves might think it's a better site. So there was an extensive evaluation of the locations, but the city was aware of the facility, and this was decided the best location for them to optimize the macro. I would point out, it's not right in the middle of a single family suburb, it's off the side in a line, and it has some bit screening with some trees, a bit of pogarty in the area. It's not going to be readily visible from the plane or nearby residential areas, so there needs to be some understanding and some context here with regard to where the facility is and how it can be located, and where it's intended to be installed with Verizon and Mars. So that's why it is very good. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thanks.
Any other discussion? We have a roll call vote?
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Farnum?
No.
Thank you. Passes.
All right, that passes, and I, the Verge Statute six seven point five zero nine six, I'm detorting that, that particular ordinance. I feel that a cell tower in a residential neighborhood is not compatible with the character and nature of the residence, and I believe that some of the things Mr. Pritchard brought Standing committee reports. Utilities, Councilman Connolly.
Ah, sounds like my microphone might be working. They took away the notes. We had our regular meeting on June the seventh, city staff and others were there. We approved the minutes, and we had a department named primarily for Mr. Sheldon, actually the owner of Mr. Sheldon, and he said that his department had seven power outages, five street light work orders, two tree work orders, eight miscellaneous work orders, and four service, along with two service upgrades in the month of last year, in those they were busy. They started moving the power lines on Majestic, assisted the gas department in the road, in the road crossing, extended electrical conduit and gas down to Majestic, sent three new transformers, pulled all the wires. All the power on Majestic is now back to normal. Work was done on, the group did streetery, installing all the electric, setting the RV pedestals, assisted the construction department in running the water line, install hydrants, generally took, took care of the whole place. They did a major, some of their equipment needed overhaul, they did a major overhaul on the rear end of the little bucket truck, and there's one single phase reclosure, saved two initial power out. We talked about the ones in the budget that are available for engineering, and identified a project, which is a starter level G I S system that can be utilized by every department in the city. Empower and talk in the period, have submitted contracts for election, sewer ratings. Natural gas department, the department has had one natural gas main hit up on Wyron Street, and it was repaired by our department. Water and sewer department, stated a valid study of sewer rate, and that is complete. And at some time in, probably in November timeframe, we will have a special utility meeting to discuss G I S. This line is wrong. According to this, the fire hydrant has been repaired, which is not true, and pushed off till sixth July, right?
Yes, actually not pushed off, moved forward to the sixth July, it was thirteen July.
It was thir- thirteen July.
Yeah, it's sixth July now, is what we're planning.
We were going back and forth about the two dates. I like the sixth better.
Me, too.
Actually, I would like to have it fixed yesterday, that would start. We, okay. We have an engine water service supervisor, Mr. Beal, that stepped up, is helping, set up the Jack position, and so far is doing what, doing a Yob's work there. A R P project update, working on water and sewer project funding through D N R. Under other business, we had a need for a closed session. Went into the closed session, quarter away. Something wrong with time. We came out of, out of the closed session, and motion was made by Councilman Wilson to accept the solid waste collection contract between the city of Waynesville and the city of St. Robert for both residential and commercial accounts.
So you came out of closed session at five oh eight?
We discussed it in closed session, but then we came out of closed session.
What time, what time?
Made the motion, the time. No idea. That kind of, that one just kind of slipped by.
Well, we could use kind of like five oh eight, because that's where you adjourned the meeting, so it did take long to make that vote, did it?
Didn't take long to make the vote, no. Probably about four thirty.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the, on the minutes?
We did, we did adjourn at, at five oh eight. Do we, do we have two ordinances?
Yes, we do. Proposed ordinance, House Bill twenty-two dash twelve.
An ordinance establishing rates for wastewater services provided by the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date. Bill number twenty-two dash twelve. An ordinance establishing rates for wastewater services provided by the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion for that ordinance?
Motion.
Mr. Liberty. Seconded. Discussion, we already had some discussion. Any other questions? Roll call?
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance, House Bill twenty-two dash eighteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve an amendment to the solid waste management intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Robert, fixing an effective date. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve an amendment to the solid waste management intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Robert, fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion for that ordinance? Mr. Rice, Mr. Connolly, seconded. Discussion.
So, the inter-service agreement for waste stuff, I think me and you kind of talked about it. When we do the inter-service agreement, residential is obviously St. Robert. When we do this, does that make commercial also, so dumpster rentals and all that stuff?
Yes. And, and just so you know, this is an amendment to the original agreement, which that amendment is the commercial side.
Does the city require any roll-offs from any specific government? Do they have to get roll-offs or whatever from the city of St. Robert?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Economic Development Committee, Councilman Rice?
Yes, the meeting was called up to order at five P M. There were no citizens' comments. We approved the meetings from May's meeting. The business spotlight was Science Smart. Does that go after?
Yeah, what's your mic number on your?
Four.
Four. Try now.
Thank you. We moved on to, Mr. Doyle discussed transportation alternatives grant program, which the city has utilized in the past for sidewalks. However, the last two submissions were not approved. The application has been recommended by MoDIE, and hopefully will be considered this time. We also went over some special events. Tomorrow is the city of Waynesville Employee Appreciation Day. Saturday is a battle cry community gospel explosion event, then Sunday's N W A C P Juneteenth. We have next weekend the Cape State Cruisers coming in for June twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth. Then we'll also be having Movies in the Park on June twenty-fourth, again on July twenty-second and August fifth. Old Settlers' Day is back, July thirty, the thirty-first. Then Route sixty-six, Hogs and Frogs is coming in on September twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. We'll have the Leap Frog Five K Frog Hill Half Marathon on September thirtieth. Then we have the Tap Bull Ten K on October first. In other business, as mentioned about the Department of Economic Development Regional Representative, Mr. Doug Potts stated that he has been in contact with Brendan Dungen. with the Department of Economic Development. Uh, Doug stated that's good to have a good relationship with that, uh, department and to be able to get on the list for projects that provide grant opportunities. Uh, we also discussed fiftieth anniversary of Ruby Duke Park, which was that Saturday before the meeting. Mr. Doyle stated that he received a lot of positive feedback on the anniversary. There was a need for closed session. We entered that at five twenty-two PM. The committee returned to open session at five fifty-five PM. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at five fifty-five PM. Next scheduled meeting is July fifth at five PM.
Is there any questions from Mr. Rice? Police committee. We had the police committee. Rhodes and Graham, Councilman Farne.
Rhodes and Graham, submit on June second at five PM. We have four and some guests, uh, plus some media. Uh, citizens comments, we had, uh, a comment from citizen Sean Wilson about a missing street sign off of Long Drive, the highway. Jason Chapman, the city road supervisor, said that he could get the sign replaced. Then citizen Cecil Davis stated he'd receive comments from citizens that the flags outside of Jane J. Harden's fly make it hard to see oncoming traffic from pulling out the Route sixty-six. Randy Brown stated there's fine covered fence at the corner of Bluff and Benton. She had to pull out halfway through the street to see around it. Anyway, Michelle Brown stated she would ask Nathan Carney to take a look at both of those to see if we can get that correct. At that point, no other citizen comments of approval of minutes from the May fifth meeting were approved. Uh, we discussed Route sixty-six shield that you may have seen around the courthouse where on, on the pavement. Well, those are in place now and they look good. Compliment our workers for getting it done. Uh, have we heard anything about actual business route sixty-six down, say from Benton Line down to the bridge and where? Getting that approved? No.
No, haven't given up yet.
Okay. For that to talk, so we'd like to see that happen. Uh, Ruby Duke Streetery was discussed and of course we know it was up and running for the fiftieth anniversary of the park system. And, uh, we had, I don't know, three or four different vendors there that I saw while I was down early in the morning, so they seem to be doing good business while I was there. I hope they're pleased and I hope they come back for more events. Uh, Sail Road, we received a message. My citizens requesting someone come out and check the condition of Sail Road. Jason Chapman stated that, uh, someone has filled in the ditch with rock and blocks of cars, which determines floods the road any time it rains. Uh, road is tracked and needs maintenance and it's on the list of roads to be repaired. However, the timeline is two years out. In the meantime, he said he can dig the ditches out deeper and remove the rock. He gave us, uh, update on, uh, projects such as Alpine Road, the curb report, final grade in asphalt, it could be completed soon. La Vista and Mesa have been gravelled. Sierra Circle is rough graded and complete, still some gravel to do. Switchback is rough graded and complete, still gravel to do. Others, why, the updates that your Chapman said they've been spending a lot of time getting old roads up the car in two thousand dollars. And other business, city clerk Brown, she reminded us of the fiftieth anniversary of Ruby Park, which like I said, I thought had a very good turnout. A few hours I've been down there. Uh, our economic developer Doug Potts stated that that's why the class of insurance bureau emailed him, complimenting the park employees on cleaning up the park after the flood and was preparing for a photo shoot for the park that tours. Have no further business, we adjourned at five thirty-five. Next scheduled meeting is July seventh at five PM.
Any questions from Mr. Bill?
Um, just a comment, um, they did replace the, the sign. Sorry, they replaced, thanks.
We have a proposed resolution. John?
The resolution authorizing the mayor and or city administrator to secure funding through the Missouri Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Program for sidewalks located within the city of Waynesville fixing an effective date.
Do I have a motion for that ordinance, for that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Connolly, seconded. Any other discussion? John, could you explain that a little further for the...
Sure, this is a, uh, TAP grant which the city's been the recipient of a, a few times in the past. Um, our grant application right now, we're, we're focusing, uh, the extension of a sidewalk from the, uh, Ruby Duke Bridge to approximately Morgan Street, um, and, and apply for, for that extension.
Michelle, just a show of hands on that vote for this, be all right?
Yes.
Show of hands for in favor of? Opposed? That passes? Finance and Human Resources.
The Finance and Human Resource Committee was, uh, open on Jan- July ninth, two thousand twenty-two, five PM. Uh, a quorum was present, uh, there were several staff and media, uh, and Councilman Sean Wilson was also there. Uh, meeting was called to order at five PM. Uh, there was no citizens comment. The committee approved the minutes of the last meeting, uh, and then the committee reviewed the bills. Uh, the committee reviewed the city cash flow reports and a bank account statement, uh, year-to-date budget. The city has completed forty-one point six percent of the fiscal year and is at forty-six percent revenues, uh, or expenses ending at forty-six percent and revenues at forty-six percent. City bank accounts total of six million one hundred thirty-three hundred and eighty-one, eighty-eight. And restricted funds, uh, mid-year adjustments, the budget's going to be amended mid-year. There are several things that they have to amend the budget for. Uh, Team Eldridge fundraisers, uh, we, I, everybody obviously knows about Jack Eldridge, uh, who has fallen on some bad times, uh, to say the least. Uh, we're doing some fundraisers June fourth, uh, they rate approximately fifteen hundred dollars for Jack Eldridge. Uh, they're, they have Jack Eldridge, Team Eldridge t-shirts for sale, uh, and order forms were provided. There's going to be a basket auction to begin on July fifteenth and all donations are due by July thirtieth. Uh, Employee Appreciation Day is tomorrow, uh, and will be held at Ozark Technical Community College. Uh, Mr. Doyle extended invitation to all council to attend. Uh, we also talked about the censorship of the mayor. Uh, Councilman Corrin stated that the committee has not received any communication or update from the mayor and is now past due on the task. She stated that after the mayor called the meeting on Tuesday to discuss how to move forward, then canceled it, they will be moving forward with articles of impeachment. Councilman Corrin expressed that she wished for a different outcome. After that discussion, we went into closed session, uh, for, uh, real estate and legal matters, uh, real estate and...
Personnel.
Personnel matters, so, um, the committee returned to open session and then the committee adjourned at five forty-two. Something that I will say, Doc kind of alluded to it, we do need to put the minutes or the time that we went from open to closed session.
And who made the motion and the vote? What time went into close, what time it came out?
So, who, who, who made the motion to go in closed session and the time and...
Those, those, that all goes into the minutes. This is just a summary of the meeting, yeah. So all of that information is in the access inside.
Any questions? Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board Meeting.
Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board Meeting was May twenty-four. Called into session at three PM. Discuss budget, it was provided to us, which reflected forty-two percent in a year. Revenues tracking at forty-five percent. Expenses tracking at forty-nine. Budget was approved. Airport Operations Manager, Mike Guy, stated fuel sales are down this month. This is an impact from the fuel prices that's going up. There was a lightning strike that took out a few items, insurance providers uncontacted and should provide coverage for those items. New business, SkyWest Airlines, Daniel Belmont, stated that on June third, he will provide an update availability of rescind notice. Ultimately, SkyWest goal would be to throw hat back in and provide service. Requesting community to sign a waiver to allow SkyWest to reduce flights once daily due to staffing and pilot changes. Effective July twelfth would be, would like to reduce flights to the end of the year and start of two thousand twenty-three if waiver is signed. Hoping cities can hold off on decision until after June third to fully take everything into consideration. Burns and McDonald Engineering Update, Terminal Area Master Plan. The latest meeting we had was June eighth at two PM, Waynesville City Hall. Uh, we discussed bounds and survey for lease, which was completed. Moon Coolberg Scope of Work and Fee, received approval from FAA. Next meeting, hope to have environmental person on site and have a NEPA kickoff meeting. SOP marketing report, Aaron Yonkin, is that how you say it? Aaron Yonkin provided the update marketing report. Our optimization score dropped six, uh, by sixty-one point five percent. Google recommends updating headlines, updating our app. Work has been done for the next month of ads, keywords have also been adjusted in hopes of approving the score for next month. There's a need for closed session, board entered in closed session at three eighteen. Back in open session for twenty-two. Saying no further business, meeting was adjourned at four twenty-two. Next meeting, Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, three PM, St. Robert City Hall.
Any questions from Mr. Liberty, if you go to the airport?
I don't know. Are we still getting a lot of private pilots using the airport since, uh, I know the major airline provider has cut back on their service? Is it still being trafficked with people flying cross-country or local or...
So there are a few, few pilots, local pilots that house their plane in the, um, hangars that, that we currently have out there and they, they utilize the airport, I would say at a more frequent basis. We do have that occasional, uh, flyer that comes in and, and, you know, they may land the plane and fuel up and then take off. But yes, there, there is private usage out there to some extent at the FBO.
And we now have two trainers, right?
Right, we actually have a trainer on staff who is being tested to be a, uh, flight instructor. He is not quite made it to that level, but he is, um, taking classes and tests to obtain his flight instruction.
Do they keep a list of how many flights come in like daily, weekly, monthly and all that?
Yes.
Do those go towards the employment numbers? They always talk about the ten thousand number or is that...
So actually, that's a good point, Bill. It's kind of a neat, neat point. So yes, they, they would, uh, and employment, if there was a plane chartered out of Fort Leonard Wood by a private, um, by private flight, that would be an employment for that airport, yes.
We have any numbers on that?
Uh, no, we actually, I do not believe that has been tracked until this year. The first I seen of it was not, um, Fort Leonard Wood tracking it, it was another, um, EAS city that was tracking those flights. And, um, so we have began tracking those flights with passengers.
Do they have a controller in the tower out there that's still ready to log?
They, they do have a controller.
Well, I would think there should be a number of them, that people in or out of the airport should be able to be tracked.
You're talking air traffic controller or...
Right. Right, somebody wants to land, they give them, uh, the direction or whatever, when conditions are set and about landing.
We can track the flights in and out of their airfield. I don't know that I tr- that tracks passengers, but it does track the flights in and out of, uh, all the planning shit.
No other questions? Other business? John, we have an appointment for Chris York. Do I have a motion to accept that appointment?
Motion.
Mr. Liberty? Mr. Corrin? Any discussion on that? Show of hands? Opposed? That passes? City ministers report.
So if we could, Doc, I'd like to back up and go through one other, other business and you'll see it in your packet. Um, I have provided, uh, it, it is required the city administrator provide in writing to, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council, board of adjustment findings, uh, and what they, um, had recommended for the grants. Now, we have covered this earlier with, um, that meeting or the meeting minutes of that, but I have a, uh, board of adjustments variance from June twenty twenty-two. And that board of adjustments was a proposed variance at that time for lot one thirty-seven of Alpine Drive in Waynesville, Missouri. It was a setback variance and, um, it was approved. I will say that the developer and network contractor did a very good job, um, illustrating what had happened and also giving a good visual to the, to the board of what that looked like from the street, so that was, uh, required by ordinance for me to update the council on that. So moving on now to the, uh, city administrators' report. I'd like to, um, kind of update the council a little bit on grant funding opportunities that the city, uh, of Waynesville is currently seeking. We are very busy with this. We have a DNR ARPA grant program, which the city is currently applying for two of the four potential grant opportunities through this, uh, through these funds. We are applying for a sewer ARPA grant. The application launch date for this was five sixteen. Application close dates, uh, July fourteenth with an award date estimated at October twelfth. Eligible entities, we are obviously in there as incorporated municipality and the maximum grant award amount would be five million. Um, our ask will probably push that number on this item possibly. I mean, we're going to be up on the sewer sideways. So we're going to talk about the water ARPA grant funding opportunities from DNR. Again, the, the launch date for that was five sixteen. Application close dates July fourteenth with the award date estimated October twelfth. Uh, eligible entity was, uh, incorporated municipality and again, an award, um, maximum or grant amount of five million dollars. We, uh, we will be applying for some of these funds. I do not expect that our water ask will be as high as the sewer ask on these two, um, items.
John, I have one other question. That five million dollars, that's all they have for that particular grant? It's not just each person?
Each person.
Okay.
So, when, when asked, that, it, it appeared that, that these, uh, these opportunities were very well funded in the past six months, okay? They, they appear to have quite a bit of money, so yes, it, it is, Doc, per ask.
Per applicant, not per whole state.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So that's good news for us. We're hopeful to receive some of those.
Better lottery ticket.
Huh?
Better no lottery ticket.
Yeah, yeah.
John, can I jump in with a thing?
For sure.
There's a, there's one of the ones that you, that, that, one of the other grants was, uh, for the lead pipes, which, you know, you guys, like most cities, I think, probably not applying for. But it turns out that the EPA is going to require all cities to do an inventory of all of the, uh, lines by January twenty twenty-four. And so a lot of cities who initially decided they didn't need that are now throwing in for that one too, just to get that inventory done.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to add one to the grant opportunities, it sounds like. We will also, as a city, if, if this inventory is, is going to be required and the grant will cover that inventory, we will absolutely apply for that and thank you for that information. Moving to the next grant opportunity is a DCIP Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program Grant, uh, Program. The, the city is currently working on projects that may qualify for this funding possibility. Um, we're coordinating the grant planning with, uh, MRPC, Mermac Regional Planning Commission, uh, with Fort Leonard Wood, SOP and other partner, partnering agencies to, um, come up with a successful project for those grant funds. project for those grant funds. They vary and there is a cap and this cap is national, so this is a highly competitive grant, but, but we're still, we're still going for it. We apply for it every year as a region and Waynesville's gonna put a project in that to be considered. We spoke about the TAP grant, we actually passed the ordinance for that, that's a grant that we are reapplying for, we have applied for this section of sidewalk before and some of it has been approved throughout the years. Those funds or monies are available again, we're gonna apply for that. The National Fitness Campaign, Fitness Court, you're gonna start seeing work out in the park again to complete that, we have discussed this Fitness Court. Doc actually kind of broke the news in a, in a council meeting about receiving the grant for that Fitness Court. Fitness Court has been delivered and we are, we're expecting to pour concrete on that this month, that's our goal. By, by this month, the first of next month, we're hoping to have concrete in the ground. So you'll probably start seeing some staking, maybe some excavation, backfilling and then concrete. Moving forward to the utility rate increase, we've obviously talked about that. Would like to talk about some upcoming events, Big Bam looked like it was very well attended on June 15th, Employee Appreciation Day is obviously tomorrow. We have a lot of events going on, they are well attended and I hear you guys, you know, you compliment a lot of the city workers, but, but this evening, I would just like to take the, just the chance to really compliment our Parks Department. They have had a very hard job this spring with the rain, the cold, the rain, floods and every photo opportunity that, that has been asked for through these events, these guys have stepped up and to the challenge and, and without complaints, without anything, they, they have worked very hard and they've kept that park in, in tip-top shape with, with all the, all the water, all the floods, all the rain, they've really done, done a good job keeping up.
I do have a point of order, I believe we've overlooked the park board.
It said there was not a meeting.
There's no meeting.
You had nothing to say?
Not about the park.
Okay.
I have a question. My question is, I didn't know what's placed in the Economic Development meeting or the Finance and HR meeting. My question is, the last council meeting, or there was supposed to be a meeting last week discussing the censure of the mayor and now they've discussed it in the meeting, so what, I would like to know as a citizen of Waynesville, what is the outcome?
Mayor's already been censured. I can answer.
I'm, I'm aware of that.
I'll answer, I'll answer. On last July, I guess, there was complaints against the mayor, then became formal complaints later, there was an investigator's report done in a special meeting here on March 31st of this year. That report is available in its full form on the city's webpage, okay? You can go in and read the investigator's report. When we say the investigator's report was done, it was not done by the city lawyer, it was not done by anybody else's lawyer, they were specifically appointed to do the investigation, municipality's investigation. They did the investigation, later they censured the mayor. When they censured the mayor, there was a stipulation, the mayor was going to take courses and do some other things and provide a plan to the city council within thirty days of that meeting. That has not been done. The meeting that was called, it got canceled, but the meeting that was called was not to discuss the censorship of the mayor, all of the minutes went out. The mayor has to appoint committee members like the Finance and Human Resource Committee to do other paperwork within the city. He called that meeting and he had said in the last city council meeting that he wanted to move on with the city. So that's what that meeting was for, was to basically move on with the city. That meeting did not happen, happened and we still have no results to the Finance and Human Resources Committees because the censorship of the mayor is a human resources committee type thing, so we have not heard anything from the mayor. So the only thing the committee can do is move on to the next step, which is not abide by censorship and moving on to articles of impeachment.
Is there a timeline for that?
There is a timeline, it's governed by the state, impeachment articles must be written, asked to go out for a certain amount of time, yes, there's a, there's a specific course of action for it. If you want that, I can send that to you by email or anything like this, it's like a timeline.
All right, council comments? Let's go with, Councilman Corinne?
I wanted to say thank you for a wonderful 50th anniversary event. I've had a lot of people in the community telling me that they had a wonderful time, they've been talking about how beautiful the park has been. There is a lot of work that has gone into fixing from all the floods and getting all the streetery up and running and so kudos, grand event, grand way to showcase our park. Also, happy birthday to the Army this week, for those that have missed that. And I want to say I am super excited to be celebrating Employee Appreciation Day tomorrow with all of our city employees. We have amazing employees here at Waynesville. If you need employment, I highly recommend you come down, fill out an application or maybe you're wanting to volunteer, come volunteer with the city. It's a wonderful place to work and volunteer. So tomorrow, remember, city employee appreciation, so the city's gonna be closed from 11 to 2, so we can make sure that we celebrate our employees appropriately. So have a happy summer.
I have nothing to say, I'm glad. You all know that really good on what's up.
Exactly.
Ditto.
Yeah. Mr. Liberty?
Well, I, I agree with Councilman Conley, I mean, she used at least two of mine.
So sorry.
Thank you all very much, you did an excellent job organizing it and following it through, that was one of the best activities I've seen in quite a while down the park. Very well done.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, I want to say goodbye to a long-time Waynesville resident, Mr. Jim Foggy. He passed away today at 90, he's a longtime neighbor of mine for decades, just a wonderful man, excellent neighbor, kind of miss him, he's on to bigger and better things now and...
Sean Wilson?
I got a couple of things. First, I concur with the parks, this last Friday, we had to remember the removal, riders come through and I'm gonna tell you, they really did a great job preparing that area. So again, thanking the, the parks team there for all of the work that they did. If you go down there, you'll see some new planted area, I mean, it really looks nice and they do this every time that there's a flood damage or anything, they bring it back up to standard and they go a little bit further. The other thing is, I would also like to bring up an issue that was happening within the, the communities, I know in one particular subdivision, speeding, vehicle speeding, trying to pass within the communities, that's unacceptable. I had someone reach out to me and they actually got into a confrontation with someone, they blocked them with their car. I'm gonna say, don't do that, although you may be motivated to do such, but I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, that they can just take down the license plate, the, the description of the vehicle and they can call up the law enforcement officers and allow them to go and, and do that and we should all do that. So please slow down within the communities, we have children out in the streets, many of our subdivisions do not have sidewalks, so the street is shared with the pedestrians, so be mindful of that. Also, to take care of one another, the temperatures are on the rise and we have elderly that may need to be checked on as far as heat is concerned, the heat in the homes, not turning your heat on, AC, the lack of AC, because they may be concerned about their electric bill or things along that line, so they're trying to use it in a minimal state, but just check on one another. With that said, also be mindful of your pets outside, left out for long periods of times without adequate shade or water. So let's not, let's start off this, this summer on a good, good note and get out and enjoy our park, we've got a lot of events coming up this weekend and also, I know it wasn't mentioned yet, but Monday is a day off, so the, we will be, we will be off because of the June 15th, June 19th event, that was on Sa- Sunday, so on that Monday, there will be no one here at the city, except for maybe John, no, but that's, that's it.
Finish those grants.
So that's all I have, thank you, thank for your support.
Mr. Davis?
I just want to give a shout out to the citizens of the city of Waynesville. There is Downtown Randy, I've already talked about him. There is Keith, there is Rena, there are so many people, I've been sitting here way longer than I should, y'all should set term when it's on me. But I've seen them at so many meetings, it's not even funny, they are actively participating in the city, I would love to see it from everybody. Also, the 50th anniversary, great event, I can't believe I made it down there to ride after pictures, but it was a very good event.
Mr. Cornell?
I'd like to remind people, you know, it was cold this last winter, you might live in an old house, had drafty doors and drafty windows, we've got a program called American Recovery Program here at the city. You meet certain guidelines and maybe you'll get up to two thousand dollars to replace windows, doors, insulation, things of that nature. So if you're a little tight on your, on your spending rate or whatever, you say you make a call, why don't you give the city hall a call, they can give you all the details. I urge you to apply, because this program is not gonna last, blah blah blah. Thank you.
I want to thank the council, all visitors for coming out tonight, it's nice to see more than four or five out here. Of course, Mr. Wilson stating about speeding in a town, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour unless otherwise marked, so bear that in mind. I also want to thank Channel 12 for coming out and doing their due geology, we appreciate it. And Missouri does have a program to assist people in some, many other facets of providing for their rent, for their cost of their, their living, so there's a number of good programs available for those, it's just a matter of helping some of the older people who may not be computer savvy or may not watch cable TV, see these programs available. So anything the city can do to assist anybody that has a particular problem or even some of the churches who may or may not be totally aware of some of these programs. That being said, adjourn.
And we can do that in an hour.